All right, the Gladstone City Council will now meet an executive session pursuant to O R S. One nine two point six six zero, section two D. To conduct conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Recognize representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. All other persons must leave the room and are respectfully requested to do so now. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed. And the deliberations that occurred during the executive session. City councilors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, city staff and volunteers. Members of the public and members of the media. The presence of the media while the city's legal council is discussing matters with the council is not attended to. Nor does it waive the attorney client privilege that attaches to those communications and any related documentation. If a final decision on any matter is necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in a regular session. Thank you very much. I call the order the Gladstone City Council meeting from March eighth, twenty twenty two at six forty three P M. And I'm very sorry for the delay in getting started. The city council meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be shown as panelists. And those watching the meeting will be attendees. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today or and were to include your topic and phone number. Tonight we will start with the consent agenda, which includes approval of the February eighth, twenty twenty two regular meeting minutes. And the February twenty second, twenty twenty two special meeting minutes. Approval of the January bank balances, budget reports for periods ending January thirty first, twenty twenty two. Approval of the January check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for February twenty twenty two. Our regular meeting agenda includes item seven, which is selection of the council president for twenty twenty two. Item eight, city council liaison appointments. Item nine, resolution one two zero six, authorizing full faith and credit financing. To enter into borrowings to finance the construction of the new public works facility located at one eight five nine five Portland Avenue. Item ten, public hearing on resolution one two zero seven. Exempting a public improvement contract from the traditional bidding process. In accordance with O R S two seven nine C point three three five, section two for the new public works facility. Item eleven is continued discussion and action on the sustainability of fire and emergency services in Gladstone. So I'm assuming Haley's going to be doing the roll call. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Haley, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Here.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have nothing, mayor. Thank you.
All right. So first is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? Start with Counselor Todd. All right, Counselor Hartman.
No question. Thank you.
Counselor Garlington.
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
None, thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
Counselor Alexander.
Not at all. Thanks.
All right. Well, I have no questions, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Seconded. Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Garlington to approve the consent agenda. Any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. So Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, consent agenda has been passed. Do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. So before we start, I would like to say a few things. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally. But have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That does not mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. They start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to participate in this process. We will have you muted until it is your time. And if we're not able to mute you, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, so please help me do that. So the first item is seven, selection of a council president for twenty twenty two. We don't have anything from staff. There was a confusion with the charter changes, so do I have any nominations for council president?
Yes. All right. Well, I move that the council interpret charter section nine to require the election of a council president for the calendar year of twenty twenty two. And I would like to nominate Counselor Garlington.
All right. Do I have any other nominations? I don't hear any. So Haley, the only one we have is Counselor Garlington. Could you do a roll call vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Tracy.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Alexander.
All right. So we have Counselor Alexander and we have Counselor Garlington. Do we have any others?
Mayor, if I could interject, I believe Counselor Alexander made a motion, and so that motion was on the table primarily. So you have to see if there's a second for that motion.
Oh, I didn't hear it as a motion. I just heard it as a statement. So we'll have that as a motion. Could you read that again? Counsel, Counselor Alexander, say it again, please.
Yeah, I move that the council interpret chapter, charter section nine to require the election of council president for the calendar year twenty twenty two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Do I have any further discussion? Haley, could you do a roll call vote for the motion, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, motion has passed. So we have two nominations on the floor, which is Counselor Garlington and Counselor Alexander. Do we have any additionals? No. Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
I'll vote for Greg. Counselor Alexander.
Counselor Alexander.
Hi, Counselor Garlington.
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Alexander.
Counselor Hartman.
Counselor Garlington.
Counselor Todd.
Um. Counselor Alexander.
Counselor Garlington.
Um, I don't think Greg wants it, so I will take, I will vote for myself.
Mayor Stimple.
Counselor Garlington. So it's four to three. Counselor Garlington is the new council president for twenty twenty two. Thank you very much. Next is the council liaison positions. So I'm going to ask how you all feel about this because some of the liaison positions, there really isn't anything to do. So I feel more that for some of them, it needs to be when something arises that grabs our attention and then somebody that's interested in that topic should probably jump in and help instead of just a blanket, one person helps with traffic safety or one with the senior center. Because I know there's some, everybody's busy. We all have a life and some of these, you know, it just doesn't take a whole lot of time and some take a ton. So the regional committees, I would like to stay on them just because I've been on them for a while and I kind of, I know what it takes and it takes a lot of time, but I'm sure there'll be times when I'll be begging for help. Business and civic, before it was Counselor Alexander and Counselor Todd. And there really hasn't been a whole lot that's been going on. So I'm thinking that we just not appoint anybody as a written in stone liaison. And then when things come up where they need help or questions, we can identify the person that's most interested. I take, does that sound okay to all of you? Or is there someone that really wants to take on the business and civic? Counselor Todd, what do you think?
I, yeah, there's, there's not that much to do except for just very, you know, specific situations that come up. That's by me, I would love to have, you know, a vibrant business association that we engage with more often, but at this time, that doesn't seem, for the next nine months that I'm on council, I don't know if that's going to happen. So just, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, and I think again that there's going to be some issues that come up where maybe Counselor Todd is really excited about and she can insert herself or Counselor Tracy. So um, everybody else okay with not having a specific business? Yeah, I'm kind of seeing, a couple heads are shaking. All right. Next is the senior center. Counselor Garlington's been doing it, but she's super, super, super busy. And I know there's a lot going on at the senior center. I would, I don't know if it warrants having a specific liaison. Is there someone that would like to do it? Or just, do you all feel also that if something comes up, we can appoint somebody that's, that's available and interested?
Can I just share one thing about that?
Yeah.
Eric, they meet every other month on a Tuesday at three thirty in the afternoon. And now that the world has gotten back into driving again. And my commute to and from work is really bad again. And it just almost makes it impossible. I have to leave here at like two o'clock in the afternoon just to make sure I can get there by three thirty. And, you know, if two oh five is backed up, I'm just stuck. So I don't mind being a second. I have enjoyed the people there. But they meet in person. They are never going to meet Zoom. They meet in person. And they are a lovely group of people to get to know. So if somebody would take that every other month, once a month meeting on, I am happy to be the second and I promise that I would be a good second. But I just would love it if somebody else would pick that up.
Anybody interested in senior center? Counselor Hartman, you'd like to do it?
Yeah, I'm happy to to jump in there and hopefully lend some of my event planning expertise and tag team with Counselor Garlington as needed.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, well then Counselor Hartman will be senior center. Parks and Rec, I've been doing it for a while and there's a lot of stuff going on. So I'd like to stay on it for a while and hopefully transition out where we really don't need somebody on Parks and Rec all that much. Traffic Safety has been Counselor Ripley and they don't, they didn't have meetings for quite some time. Now they're starting to have meetings again. Is it something that you would like to continue with or do you want to bow out?
If they, if they would like me there, I have no problem being there. Zoom meetings, I think, are ridiculous personally. Um, but I'm there for whatever the, whatever people want me to do.
Okay.
I really have no preference.
No, I'd like you to do it if you would be willing to. And I, Council or City Administrator Bets and I were talking yesterday about when we might start going in person full time and we're, we're talking May-ish. You know, I'm not going to say May for sure. We're going to wait to see what happens after everybody goes maskless, but our goal is to be back in person here within the next couple of months. So Counselor Ripley, you're, you're a good, you're, you're a guest on Traffic Safety?
You bet.
All right, good. Um, Library Board, Counselor Garlington is incredibly passionate about it and she's been going to every single meeting and then some. So I would like to keep you on the library.
I'll take that. I'll stay with that one. I'm good with that. They're mostly Zoom. And as long as they stay with that, given how many meetings this group has and where you have to stay in touch, I'm, I'm okay with it. But if I get into a pickle, I'll definitely bring it back to the group.
Okay. So are you going to the Concord, the, all of the meetings or are they separate now?
Concord meetings, the Gladstone meetings and the County Library Board meeting. So it's three meetings with, I'm not doing L D A C because
That's Natalie.
Natalie's going to the L D A C meetings and I'm not, yeah, she's doing that. So she would bring that information back if we needed to know something.
Okay. So you're good with library?
I am.
Public Works, we split that out to Storm and Sewer and Water. I've been doing the Storm and Sewer since the day I became mayor. Luckily, we're, well, kind of sort of lucky, we're at a point where now they're needing to do some improvements and we're looking somehow to get a whole bunch of money to pay for those. So I'm not quite sure what the meeting load is going to look like moving forward, but if there's somebody that really loves talking about sewer. Um, I would be more than happy to share that with you. I just want to make sure that we are a part of it because of the past. We need to make sure that, that we have a say. And then water infrastructure. Counselor Tracy, is that something that's kind of winding down or do you see a lot more meetings coming up?
No, we do quarterlies and, um, no, I mean, it's not winding down. It's managing the asset that we own.
Okay. So do you want to continue with water? Is that?
I'm fine, I'm fine continuing. And I think that the, the board of commissioners would probably prefer me to at least continue through my term.
Okay. And then if there's any point where you thought, I think you want to start tag teaming the sewer meetings, I'm not going to beg, but, okay. Um, planning, my, I'm at, oh, Counselor Hartman.
I just had a quick thought. Um, as if Counselor Tracy, not that I have wanting to do sewer or water. But as Counselor Tracy will transition out at the end of the year, depending if he decides to run again. Um, should we have someone like tag team with it, like, you know, so we don't have a break in that education in the water part, you know, for our next set of counselors and, um, I don't know, just it was a thought that crossed my head. If one of us should tag team so that we can learn. Um, I don't have an interest, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Counselor Tracy.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, originally the Public Works Director actually attended all the meetings when Mr. Waynot was here as a director. So he had a lot more of the inside information and we had counselors that had been recalled, so they were no longer on the commissioner board. I think it's a great idea to shadow. Uh, so I would suggest that like the, the last, at least the last last quarterly meeting or the last two quarterly meetings that we probably should have either a counselor that's interested or somebody to go ahead and shadow so that they understand what's going on with the board.
Okay. And those meetings are still over here in Milwaukee?
Uh, no, they're actually
Zoom.
They're, they've been on Zoom, but typically we meet at the water plant or at the Oplod Water Services.
Okay. So if you all want to think about it and, and if anybody's interested, let me know and we'll slip you in there. Um, planning, I've been doing it, but my feelings about planning are that we really shouldn't have a liaison with planning because there is a chance that everything that they look at could be appealed to the city council. And I, I don't want to have that, it get messy. So my philosophy is that if there's a point where they need a council member, then they can come to us and ask. But until that time, I just, I don't feel comfortable having a city councillor as an active liaison at all their meetings. I've listened to a couple of them and not actually been a panelist. And I think that's okay, but I don't count, or City Administrator Bets, Chad, what do you think about that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's okay to not have a liaison on the planning commission just specifically for the reasons that you mentioned. At any time that an elected official wants to go back and watch a recording or a video of a meeting, you're welcome to do that. But that is the safer route for the elected officials is to stay away from anything that could be appealed to them in a meeting.
And you agree, Chad, you're shaking your head, so that makes sense to you too. All right.
Yep.
Budget audit, Counselor Garlington's been doing it. There isn't a whole lot coming up. Is that correct?
Yes, we're in a biennial budget and we do our audit once a year. So technically you really don't need a liaison for that either.
Okay. And then the whole council is actually part of the budget committee. So, I mean, we're all participatory in that, in that group. So nobody for budget and audit. Um, school district? Counselor Hartman, I mean.
Yeah, I'm happy, happy to stay and provide updates as I happen, you know, and I have kids in the school district, so it just makes sense. But no, there's not a ton, but I'm happy to stay as sort of an information giver and, you know, I still attend the meetings and, and whatnot, so.
Because the other option is that we used to do quarterly meetings with the school board and Bob. And we're going to start that up again. So if, if, if you'd rather, we could just all of us go to the quarterly meetings and not have an actual liaison for every month. That might lighten your load a little bit because I know you're super, super busy right now. Just one more thing that you have to juggle. Um, and that way we're all, we're all participating.
Sure. I, yeah, I'm open for whatever.
Okay. So we'll, we'll just do the quarterly. I think we have the next quarterly comes up next month. So we'll look at that, see if that fits our need as far as getting all the information back. And if not, then we'll, we'll get you on school board. Um, police and fire, I know Counselor Alexander's been doing that. He takes it very seriously. He loves to do that. So do you want to continue with police and fire?
Of course.
Okay. All right. So recap, regional committees, I'll continue with that, which is C four, metro and the sewer. Business and civic, we're not going to have anybody unless a specific concern or issue comes up and then we'll appoint those that are interested. Senior Center is Counselor Hartman, Parks and Rec is me and we'll hopefully um, uh, get out of that as far as an active participant. Traffic Safety is Counselor Ripley. Library Board, Counselor Garlington. Public Works, Sewer and Storm is me. Water Infrastructure is Matt and we'll get backups for the last quarterly meeting. Planning, nobody. Budget Audit, nobody. School District Board, we'll just try and do the quarterly meetings for now. And then Police and Fire is Counselor Alexander. Does that sound good? Thumbs up? Everybody's okay with that? Yeah? Okay. Then I'll type it up and I'll get it to staff and we'll send it to everybody so that you know who's who and what you're responsible for. All right. Any other questions or concerns on that item? I don't see anything. All right, great. Thank you. Um, next is item number nine, which is resolution one two zero six. Authorizing full faith and credit financing to enter into borrowings to finance the construction of the new public works facility located at one eight five nine five Portland Avenue is authorized by the city charter and measure three dash five seven zero. Staff.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, city council and mayor. Tonight you have two items related to the new public works facility. And as you recall, ballot measure three five seven, five seventy, the authorization to construct and incur debt for public works facility was approved by the voters in November twenty twenty one. The next step is for us to go forward with borrowing the money to complete that project. I have our finance consultant, Kathy Brocker, with us tonight that will walk you through the staff report.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Uh, tonight we are making one of the final steps as far as the um, completing the request for financing for the five million dollars for the public works facility. Since the November two twenty one election, the financing package has been constructed with the same repayment plan as we had originally presented. For your reminder, it was a twenty year repayment on a full faith and credit direct placement with a bank. And the repayment would be made by five different funds. Parks would pay ten percent. And then Rhodes, Waters, Sewer and Storm would reimburse up to twenty two and a half percent. Interestingly enough, the last estimated interest rate quotes that I got, which were at the end of January, were actually slightly lower than the ones when we originally set out on this whole process. Um, as you all have heard, there, you know, the feds are looking at interest rate increases. So I don't know if that will affect these direct placement rates or not. You know, we can never be sure on that. But they are moving ahead shortly on issuing or requesting the bids. And um, as far as anything else, it's, you know, we are utilizing, utilizing the full faith and credit of the city, which is very good. So we should get very good rates. That is what we're hoping. And with the approval of resolution twelve oh six, we will be able to go forward with requesting that, uh, those, those bids. So what we would like to request is that you approve resolution twelve oh six, authorizing the full faith and credit financing to finance the public works facility project and pay costs related to the financing. Are there any questions?
Um, let me, let me do it in order because I got to make sure I don't miss anybody. Counselor Todd. No. All right, Counselor Hartman.
No question. Thank you.
Counselor Garlington.
I have a question about refinancing. I'm not a proponent of it. I think that when we vote in something like this and we tell people that it's going to be a twenty year loan, it stays at a twenty year loan. Is there? Is there a way to ensure that?
Um, yes, it could probably be written into the docs as far as the loan docs. Uh, but one of the reasons for refinancing is that it can save the city interest money. And so what our financial advisors do and what they currently, or excuse me, recently just did was review our financing structure and what we owed on what, on the debt outstanding for the civic center. And they came back at that time and determined that it made no sense whatsoever to refinance it. They're not going to normally recommend any type of refinancing unless it, as I say, it's a significant interest savings for the city, which obviously then is for the taxpayers. The state of Oregon would also have to approve that refinancing. And ultimately, of course, it's up to the council as to whether they want to do it or not. I hope that, does that answer your question?
It does. It, it's just kind of a bone of contention with me, um, given our current state with the city right now and, um, some, as we all know, some refinancing of some debt within the city. And I, I, I'm just not a proponent of it and I, and I would like to somehow ensure our taxpayers that this debt won't go on and on and on and on, you know?
You would not be able to refinance it for a longer term. You, your term would decrease and your interest costs would decrease.
Okay, so it, sorry. I apologize, Tracy. Go ahead.
You're muted, Tracy. Counselor Todd.
I glossed myself. I couldn't figure it out. Um, I, Counselor Garlington, I think that's what you're talking about, the school bond, correct?
Correct.
They, they also did the same thing. It was not extended. It was, it, by law, it can't be extended. The bond was for a twenty year bond and it's a twenty year bond. It was just the debt was refinanced. And I think that's what Finance Director was saying, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure it can't go on any further than the twenty years we're looking at.
No, they just, they, they took the amount and they redid it and for a lower interest rate. So, but it's not for a longer amount of time. I believe the government, the state powers that be will not allow you to do. So I'm glad it
City Attorney would be able to answer that much more assuredly than I can.
You want me to chime in?
Yes, please.
Okay. So one thing I think you should understand about the bonds that are being presented to you tonight is that these are full faith and credit bonds that are based on revenue that's going to be derived from various sources. They're not going to be a bond that goes or raises property taxes.
Yeah.
So it's not a situation where people are going to continue to pay and pay additional property taxes for a bond over a longer period of time. Um, so this is just money that's being taken out of the budget from various sources to pay for the public works facility. So I think that's a pretty big distinction between what Counselor Garlington, you're worried about versus this type of bond situation, if that helps.
Just trying to make sure. Want to make everybody clear that this is a one time thing. Thank you.
Right. Counselor Tracy.
No questions. Thanks.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
Counsel Alexander.
None, thank you.
All right, and I don't have any questions. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution number 1206?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 1206.
Um, could you read what's on the bottom of nine dash one, the full text there?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1206 of the City of Gladstone, Oregon, authorizing full faith and credit financing to finance the public works facility project and pay costs related to the financing.
One second. My second.
All right, motion was made by Counsel Garlandon and seconded by Counsel Alexander to approve Resolution 1206. Do we have any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any hands, so Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Ripley?
Yes.
Counsel Alexander?
Yes.
Counsel Tracy?
Yes.
Counsel Hartman?
Hi.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Garlandon?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, so Resolution 1206, authorizing full faith and credit financing to enter into borrowings to finance the construction of the new public works facility located at 18595 Portland Avenue as authorized by the city charter and measure three dash five seven zero has passed. So next is item 10, which is public hearing for Resolution 1207, exempting a public improvement contract from the traditional bidding format in accordance with O R S 279C 335, section two, for the new public works facility. And we're going to break this down into two discussions. The first is to hear and consider written or oral testimony on the proposed exemption from the traditional bidding process. And two is to consider approving Resolution 1207. Um, I see Kim's on there. Hi, Kim. All right, so staff.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I do want to introduce to you Kim Knox, who's the project manager for the new public works facility. As many of you will recall, Kim helped us with the Gladstone Civic Center project. I'm going to give you a brief summary of what the action item is referring to tonight. And then if Kim has anything to add, then we can go ahead and invite her to do so. Like the mayor said, tonight we're asking the city council to approve Resolution number 1207, a resolution exempting a public improvement contract from the traditional bidding in accordance with O R S 29C 3352. We're also asking for authorization to solicit requests for qualifications. The city posted draft findings in the Daily Journal of Commerce for an exemption to traditional competitive bidding process. Instead, the city is seeking to use a progressive design-build-delivery method to design and build the new public works facility. This will be the second time the city has used this delivery method. The first was the Gladstone Civic Center. Progressive design build provides for a streamlined, fast-tracking permitting and land use process. Typically, they can be finished in 14 to 18 months versus a traditional design build, which takes about two years. The objective is to assemble the right team, which means you hire the architect and the contractor to achieve the best possible outcome with our public works facility. Progressive design build fosters a collaborative, integrated, trusting team environment, whereas the city and the design building are working together to make decisions in the best interest of the project. The traditional design builds can create challenges. Innovation can be stifled and the city is forced to take the low bid, which could affect the quality of work. And we are susceptible to change orders if there are problems in documents. A traditional design bid can also be costly and take significant time. Most importantly, however, a traditional design build inhibits the ability of the owner and design builder to truly collaborate on design ideas. The pyramid laws create practical limitations as to how much collaboration can take place prior to the award. For a small organization such as Gladstone, a progressive design build is a practical and economical approach. In 2020, the City of Gladstone previously constructed a public improvement using the design-build method, as I mentioned, constructing the Gladstone Civic Center. This project was completed on time and within budget. If approved, the city anticipates to issue a request for proposals, inviting qualified design-build firms or teams to submit proposals for the project. By issuing an RFP, the city will use a competitive and transparent process to award a contract to the most qualified design-build contractor. The RFP or Q will treat all proposers equally and will utilize criteria to ensure no proposer is favored over another proposer. Therefore, the city finds that the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism in awarding public improvement contracts or substantially diminish competition for public improvement contracts. In your packet are detailed findings in support of an exemption from traditional competitive bidding. Those findings prove that awarding a public improvement contract under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits to the contracting agency. Use of the design-build-delivery method for the city considers the 14 factors identified in O R S 279C 3352B, A through N, in order to find that the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits. The city believes an evaluation of those factors demonstrated that the exemption will likely save the city money and provide other benefits to the city. I'm not going to go into detail about those 14 findings as they're in your packet. They're posted on the website. But I do want a call attention to the names. That is availability of bidders, budget and operating costs, public benefits, value engineering, cost and availability of specialized expertise, increases in public safety, reduction of risks, funding sources, impacted market conditions, size and technical complexity, new construction versus renovation, occupied during construction, phasing of construction, expertise of staff and consultants. These findings were prepared by the city attorney's office and staff finds that the use of a design-build-delivery method will foster competition among a large pool of eligible proposers and will likely result in cost savings to the city. The city has received no public testimony on this item and staff recommends that the Gladstone City Council approve the use of a design-build-delivery method for the public works facility project and authorize staff to solicit requests for qualifications. Thank you.
All right, um, so one quick question before I start asking if they have, anybody has any questions or concerns. Do you want us to do, do this in one motion where we also authorize staff to solicit the RFQ? Or do you want those in two separate?
I think we can do it in one motion.
That is chat up there. Chat, does that sound okay? All right. Okay, so anything else from staff? I see Kim is on, on the Zoom meeting. Do you have any comments? This is exciting. I don't understand why this isn't standard. And I'm hoping that it becomes a standard option in the future. I just don't understand. And Jackie saying two years for regular design build, that's being very, very optimistic. Very, very optimistic. Kim, anything else? Any experts?
Well, the expert, well, I, all I say is we're seeing more and more of this kind of a format, the progressive design build. Um, and I think Gladstone has established a really great precedent about how it can work for a small jurisdiction really well. We see progressive design build being kind of the, if you're into this kind of stuff, being kind of uh, intriguing and exciting. Um, big things like the Portland Airport are doing it. But the fact that City of Gladstone is showing that it is a cost value added to you guys is a, it's a different animal and I think it's a, it's a great model for a lot of small communities, so.
You get a better, you just, bottom line, you get a better building. And everybody's bought into it. It's, it's a great process. And Kim, you've been instrumental in making it such a wonderful process. So, okay, Counsel Todd, questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns, but I mean, it went phenomenally well with the civic center. So I'm hoping for the net, for this as well.
Counsel Hartman.
No questions. Yeah, it was my only thing was why this isn't just the standard instead of, you know, having to choose your belt. But um, thank you for putting this together.
Counsel Garlandon.
No questions and no concerns.
Counsel Tracy.
None, thank you.
Counsel Ripley.
No questions, thank you.
Counsel Alexander.
None here, thanks.
Awesome, I don't have any questions other than I'm very, very excited that we were able to get Kim on board and that we're looking at doing this again. So I would entertain a motion and it's on the bottom of page, oh, hold on a second. It's a public hearing. Haley, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this one?
I do not believe so.
Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion and on the bottom of page 10 dash six is the, um, the verbiage of that motion.
I will make a motion. I make a motion to approve Resolution number 1207, a resolution exempting a public improvement contract from the traditional bidding in accordance with O R S 29C dot 3352 and authorize staff to solicit requests for qualification.
One second.
Motion was made by Counsel Hartman and seconded by Counsel Todd. Do we have any additional questions or concerns? I don't see anything. Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Ripley?
Yes.
Counsel Alexander?
Yes.
Counsel Tracy?
Yes.
Counsel Hartman?
Hi.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Garlandon?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, it has passed, Resolution 1207, awesome. Now the fun, fun part begins. All right, next is item number 11, continued discussion and action on the sustainability of fire and emergency services in Gladstone. And before we start this discussion, I'd like to declare conflict of interest. My husband works for the Gladstone Fire Department, currently in one of the captain's positions. And because this discussion includes that position, I will recuse myself and Counsel President Garlandon, feet to the fire, will chair this discussion and action. Thank you.
Oh, didn't think of that one, did I? Um, okay, so our agenda item is to continue the discussion and action regarding the fire and emergency services in the City of Gladstone. Staff?
Thank you, Counsel Garlandon. At this time, our city recorder is going to put up a presentation. And given the questions from the previous meeting, I would like you to indulge me to provide a shoot, a short tutorial to the public to explain how fire and emergency services are funded in local government. Okay, go ahead with the first slide, Haley. So what is local budget law? Local budget law was established under the Oregon Revised Statutes, O R S, chapter 24. Cities are required to adhere to the state's local budget law, which is a group of standardized statutes that requires local governments to prepare and adopt annual or biennial budgets following a very specific process. In Oregon, all local governments must plan a balanced budget, meaning that the resources and expenses are equal. We cannot plan to purchase more items or services than we have money to pay for them. Local budget law explains the entity and fiscal policies that frames the budget. It strongly encourages citizen participation throughout the process and it ensures control of spending as adopted by the governing board. Once adopted, the budget is a legal document that establishes the authorization to receive and spend money and limits how much money can be spent for a specific activity or program. In other words, it controls expenditures of public dollars. Next. Funds. Funds are established for specific activities or purposes and they cannot be transferred to other fund types. These are the City of Gladstone fund types. The general fund, which is our main operating fund and accounts for the daily operations of the city and the money that is estimated to be available to pay for these general needs. We are going to examine specific services from the general fund shortly. Special revenue funds. The Urban Renewal Agency is included in this discussion but issued separately through the Urban Renewal Agency budget. Just to provide a brief background, the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency was organized in 1988 to provide rehabilitation of blighted areas within the district. It is a separate legal and financial entity governed by the members of the Gladstone City Council. The Road and Street Fund is to maintain the city's transportation system, including roadways, sidewalks and pathways in order to improve public safety and livability. Revenues are generated from vehicle registration fees, state highway taxes, right-of-way fees and transportation system development charges. The Police and Communications Levy Fund collects 68 cents per thousand and funds approximately 20.2% of the total police department. The Fire and Emergency Services Levy Fund collects 31 cents per thousand and funds approximately 19.5% of the total Gladstone Fire Department. We will talk a little bit more about this later. Enterprise funds record the resources and expenditures of acquiring, operating and maintaining a self-supporting facility service, such as city water, sewer, stormwater and infrastructure. The revenue from the city's utility bills must stay in the enterprise funds, which is why public works budgets cannot subsidize general fund activities. In an agency fund, the municipal court fund is required by local budget law and requires the city to budget resources and expenses. The fund collects all fines and fees collected from traffic infractions and municipal code violations, then it is remitted out to other agencies. The takeaway from this slide is that the general fund and the Fire and Emergency Services Levy Fund are how the Gladstone Fire Department is funded, which we will provide detail in the next slide. So the types of taxes related to the fire department. We want to specifically talk tonight about those taxes that fund the fire department. The general fund dollars come from property taxes. In Gladstone, the city's permanent rate of 4.8174 per thousand of assessed value. The fire department portion in 2021 is 1.7063 per thousand, which equals approximately $1,667,424. The local option tax that I referred to with the Fire and Emergency Services Levy, which was 31 cents per thousand, totals about $578,717. So as you can see, the total fire department budget is 2.246141, over 2 point uh, million dollars in the, in the fire department's total budget. The Fire and Emergency Services Levy Fund was originally approved by the voters in November of 1998. Since then, it has been renewed every five years with the most recent approval in 2018. As mentioned, the current rate is 31 cents per thousand and the levy amount has never been increased since 1998. Next. So tonight, we wanted to show you a comparison of services in Clackamas County. It might be hard to see in this slide, but, but what we wanted to show is that Gladstone, Portland, and Lake Oswego are the only cities in Clackamas County that provide their own fire services. Gladstone does have a high property tax rate, but we do not have as high of assessed value on property as the other cities in the county, nor do we have the population base as others. Gladstone's property taxes are contained. In other words, there is no room to expand our city limits and to collect new property tax revenue. We are landlocked by two rivers and next to the city of Milwaukee. Additionally, Gladstone has a number of parks, schools, and churches that do not pay property tax dollars. And many of you are aware that the largest property is the Seventh Day Adventist in Gladstone. So as, as I reiterate, parks, schools, and churches do not pay into the property tax system. So we are essentially a rural city in a metro area providing urban level of services. We are continually asked to provide more with no ability to increase our revenue resources unless the city council implements fees. Next. So this chart illustrates how money in the General Fund is allocated. As you can see, about forty percent is allocated to public safety, which includes police and fire. Public safety's primary objective is to protect citizens, and it helps build strong and vibrant communities. We are very fortunate in Gladstone. It's a safe place to live. However, if it were not for Clackamas Fire District Number One subsidizing fire and emergency calls at no cost, Gladstone residents would not receive the same level of service and fire emergency services that they have been receiving. As you can see from the pie chart, the other services that the city provides from the General Fund are the senior center, recreation, parks, administration, which includes finance, utility billing, and contracting for planning services. It includes the city's information technologies infrastructure, the municipal court facilities, and our library contribution. The city strives to maintain a healthy general fund ending fund balance of ten percent of general fund unreserved revenues. At a minimum, we have seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. This is determined by the city's financial policy. This is to help us to be financially stable through December for the following fiscal year before property taxes are received. As you can see from the bottom of the slide, the total fire department budget is two million, two hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. If the city council chooses to increase funds in the fire department to improve services, then we must decrease other services from this pie chart. And before we propose auctions for increasing revenues for the fire department, I'm gonna have Fire Chief Huffman go over the current staffing levels in the department and discuss how that aligns with community standards for response.
Thank you, Administrator Betts. Good evening, Council and citizens of Gladstone. I'd like to take this opportunity to update you on current fire department staffing and the situation that we are in. Uh, next slide there, Haley, please. Thank you. This week, total staffing for the Gladstone Fire Department will be two full-time captains and twelve paid-on-call firefighters. Retention has been difficult pre-pandemic and even more challenging under pandemic conditions. These vacancies, along with resignations, effectively bring us below fifty percent staffing. The following is a quick review of our staffing and the impacts of these shortages. Our full-time captains work in twenty-four-hour shifts. It's divided into A, B, and C shifts. This results in one full-time captain on duty each day, excuse me. Due to the pandemic, I halted callback volunteer-type deployment for emergency responses to avoid quarantines that could have shut us down. For the past two years, we've tried to staff the fire station with one full-time captain, one paid-on-call firefighter that is qualified to drive and operate the fire engine, and an additional paid-on-call firefighter to complete the minimum staffing of that engine. This type of staffing has also allowed us to improve response times in Gladstone. This staffing plan was intended as temporary until the end of pandemic conditions. Unanticipated captain vacancies, recruitment impacts, and retention challenges have dealt a blow to our repeated efforts to adequately answer nine-one-one calls. On-call firefighter availability in Gladstone has declined considerably over the past year and has resulted in more hours worked by paid-on-call firefighters than is intended. A temporary solution was implemented in January of this year to allow two paid-on-call firefighters be assigned to each shift until April full, excuse me, until April first to ensure response for the three-person fire engine while these issues are brought to your attention. This was also coordinated with the firefighter union to allow time to resolve the issue. This temporary fix assigned six of the twelve paid-on-call firefighters to A, B, and C shift, leaving a bare-bones number of reserve forces. It must be emphasized that on-call employees, referred to as paid-on-call firefighters, were originally employed to respond while off-duty or work limited unscheduled shifts. Our on-call firefighters are not intended for recurring shift work and cannot replace full-time employees. The unanticipated resignations of the full-time captains have impacted us the most. The full-time captains are vital to managing daily operations, supervising the firefighters, delivering training, and for ensuring fast emergency response. The captain that has just resigned suffered an injury in early February and has been unable to work on his shift. Because of this, on average, the remaining two captains need to work thirty-six hours of overtime each week to keep the fire engine staffed. This is in addition to their fifty-six-hour work week and results in a minimum of a ninety-two-hour work week. Fatigue and budget impacts are real, and this is not safe or sustainable. With only two captains remaining, we are unable to provide emergency response with a fire engine with any consistency. The current captain that has resigned is also the EMS and Training Chief in the, and our only full-time paramedic. Additionally, he's been covering the duties of the last captain that resigned to staff the fire engine and has been covering his shift. The resignation, excuse me, the resignation of this captain will have major impacts on all department operations. Additionally, two paid-on-call firefighters who are also paramedics have given their verbal resignation. Both have accepted full-time jobs with fire departments and will leave in April. Another is in the final process with a fire department for a full-time job. The remaining paid-on-call firefighters are tested for, are testing for full-time jobs or have full-time jobs in construction, wholesale, and other lines of work, and they're not able to support our current staffing needs. We tried to recruit replacements. In the last two years, we've only recruited three that have completed their training and that are still with us. Our newest recruit that was hired last year just completed the Joint Training Academy and should be completing field training next month, and the evaluations will allow that person to work as a firefighter. On average, it takes a month to complete the field training, and from initial recruitment to becoming a qualified firefighter can take ten to twelve months. Additional time and training is needed to qualify individuals to be able to drive and operate the fire engine. The resignation's recruitment challenges and COVID impacts have had a major impact on all our departments, departments' operations. The fire department cannot meet Gladstone standards of cover or the community standard for nine-one-one response. So what are these standards? As I've referenced over the past two years during work sessions, strategic planning, and in monthly reports, we have local, state, and national standards that reflect the appropriate emergency response for our city. Additionally, when the communities that surround Gladstone call nine-one-one, the common emergency response that they receive can be measured to our service level. This is referred to as a community standard of what is acceptable. The standard for an emergency response is for a three-person fire engine staffed in the fire station twenty-four-seven year-round with a paramedic. This is the normal response capacity in the Portland metro area and beyond when nine-one-one is called. Additionally, surrounding agencies have supplemented on-duty forces to deploy, to deploy immediately to meet their standards of cover. An example is when a minimum of fifteen firefighters are needed and sent to a house fire. We can only respond with three, uh, if the staff is available. The remaining forces typically come from Clackamas and occasionally to Walton Valley. The goals and objectives outlined, excuse me, the goals and objectives outlined in the fire department's strategic plan are now difficult to achieve. The identified citizen priorities of faster response times and the technical competency of firefighters is very challenging to maintain. In summary, we've reached a critical point and cannot continue to provide services that meet these minimum standards. Next slide, please. So what are the financial implications to meet community standards? As the city administrator mentioned, to keep the fire department and staff the station with three full-time firefighters every day, we would have to have an estimated six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars of additional funding annually for six additional F T Es. Uh, that would put two on every shift and including the captain. An estimated six hundred thousand dollars of additional funding for annual response, annually for response coverage and administrative needs, and for a total of one point two million dollars of annual increase to provide a fire station with three firefighters every day. This does not include contract needs until recruitment and training of the F T Es and on-call firefighters is complete. We would still need to maintain a, a, a force of on-call firefighters to meet standards, and we'd have to do the recruitment. And as you heard earlier, it takes quite a while to go through the application process and recruit. Uh, next slide, please.
So let's talk a little bit about the options in the General Fund. If the city council decided that they wanted to increase the funding one point two million and hire additional staffs, here are some of the various options that staff has come up with. We could research a contract with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for policing services. The city parks could become part of North Clackamas Parks District. Voter approval would be required for that. We would need to have cuts from various general fund departments, including the senior center, parks, recreation, and the police department. We could implement a fire department-specific public safety fee. It totals to about twenty-three dollars and fifty cents per month, and that's based on three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five utility bill accounts. Or we could triple the fire, fire levy to ninety-three cents per thousand. These are all various ways, if the city council chose that they wanted to fully increase the revenue for the fire department, that it would equate to about one point two million dollars for you to consider. On the next slide, I'll have Chief Huffman go over some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting and give some non-financial implications of the answers to those questions.
Thank you. Yes, these questions were asked at the special session. Uh, one was related to what do the residents of the fire district pay? Uh, their, their district rate is two dollars and forty cents per thousand. Uh, another question was, what is the cost subsidy outside the mutual aid agreement in responding? And a quick review, mutual aid, uh, if we had a fire in Clackamas, sent a unit over here, and then they had a fire and we sent a unit over there, that's mutual. But in two thousand and twenty-one, there were two hundred and seventy-five mutually responses between our agencies. We ran, uh, let me rephrase that. There was two hundred and seventy-five responses by Clackamas into Gladstone and seventy-five into Clackamas for the mutual response. So that leaves two hundred above and beyond the mutual number there. So this number of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is based on fourteen hundred dollars per call, which is, uh, and the chief, Chief Brown can back me up on this, but basically, uh, the rates are, are based on their operating costs and I believe on state mobilization rates. Is that true, Chief?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that's how we came up with that figure for what would be charged for above and beyond mutual aid. I think that points to the number of calls and lack, and lack of ability for us to handle those. Uh, another question was, what is the cost if we keep the fire department and Clackamas Fire subsidizes services? Kind of a hybrid approach, which actually we, we would, uh, we would need to do this regardless. We currently have fleet maintenance, uh, contract and a fire marshal and fire investigation contract with the, um, with the district, and we would, uh, need other services even if we maintained our own fire department. So that would be two hundred thousand dollars annually additional response coverage and training. And that comes up to, when I mentioned the fifteen firefighters that go to a house fire, the effective response force that's referenced in our standard, standard of cover, uh, mentions this. We can't provide that, so we need to pay for that. And that would allow for a fire engine, a ladder truck, and a, and a command officer for that, um, amount of money. And then it would be an additional, um, I think it was a hundred and two thousand dollars for that, and it's about ninety-plus thousand, ninety, ninety-eight thousand for training. As you recall in our past documents, we have no training facility, and we're really deficient in that. And we would need something to be able to train our own forces to that level. Approximately sixty thousand dollars per month for shift coverage. This is, uh, uh, another number that comes from our lack of fire, or captains right now and paid-on-call. And there's a fifty, let me get that number for you really quick. The cost for, um, a shift is five thousand, eight hundred and ninety. And so rounding up for staffing comes about sixty thousand estimated dollars per month. And what that means is we have, as I described, an A, B, and C shift. If we only have two captains, and they all work about ten shifts a month, we have about ten shifts of vacant coverage in a month. Until we get that covered in about a year, we're gonna have to pay approximately sixty thousand in the estimated amount. So those are the question follow-up from the special session. Next slide, please. I'd like to, to discuss this comparison of cost-neutral contract for services with Clackamas. As directed in September of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, we began discussions with Clackamas on a contract for services to stay within, uh, our, our budget. Clackamas and Gladstone, uh, would benefit from this on both sides, and Chief can talk about that. But to describe the, the graphic on your screen, excuse me, on the left side is Gladstone Fire in our current staffing. On the right side is Clackamas and what they can provide to us right now. So for Gladstone, as I described, we will only have, uh, three full-time employees, uh, later this week, and that includes myself. So only two that can staff the fire engine. The current full-time staffing in Clackamas is two hundred and eighty-six today. Uh, for fire station, we could staff the fire station with three people. We, as I mentioned, we cannot currently do that. We have one captain on each shift, and so, and we also have a vacancy. We also have a hard time filling the rest of the paid-on-call after April first. Clackamas would be able to provide nine full-time employees immediately with a paramedic. And, um, we have about twelve, and like I said, we'll be reducing that number into the single digits next month. Uh, nine paid-on-call as our backup force. And Clackamas has about fifty-six firefighters on duty daily, uh, as an on-duty full-time backup force. Uh, the emergency response fleet is, uh, we have six emergency response vehicles. Clackamas has approximately forty-two response vehicles. Uh, those does not count support and staff vehicles. So I think that's a good comparison. If Chief Brown, you have any comments about, uh, the cost-neutral contract discussions we've had in the past?
Thanks, Chief Huffman. No, I, I just, I just would like to add a piece here in that a, a couple of questions that I received from, uh, from some Gladstone residents, uh, via email were, were fears about the staffing at the Gladstone Fire Station. And what you're, what you're referencing is that we would be staffing twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year out of the Gladstone Fire Station with with, with on-duty at a time, three paramedic-trained, uh, firefighters. So just wanted to, uh, to add that piece that, that what, what you're referencing is, is Clackamas Fire out of the Gladstone Fire, Fire Station.
Thank you.
Uh, the next slide really is to go back and review our options. Options are we can maintain the substandard level of services, which means our current budget and staffing. We could increase full-time employees to meet community standards. Or we can contract with Clackamas Fire District Number One for fire and emergency services. Staff has been transparent with the city council about the sustainability of fire and emergency services in Gladstone. In fact, the city council adopted it as a goal in its strategic plan. It was also highlighted in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-three budget message that the current structure of fire services is not sustainable in the long term and staff will be exploring options to recommend to the city council. Our strategy from the onset has been to share information, whether good, bad, or ugly, listen to people's concerns because our leaders care about its residents and are willing to explore solutions to the problems and identify steps that might be taken to address those concerns. This is an extremely emotional topic, yet it is a central responsibility for public officials to make decisions that are in the community's interest. This is the essence of leadership in a represented democracy. It would be a tragedy if something bad happens because no action was taken. Gladstone citizens deserve an effective and qualified fire and emergency response force in our community. And staff is recommending that the city council direct us to draft an agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One to contract for fire and emergency services. Thank you.
So I guess that brings that back to me and we are going to open the floor up for discussion. Um, I'll call on everyone one at a time like Mayor Stempel does and, um, there's a lot of discussion here, and so I don't mind circling back around through the list twice if need be. Uh, so that might happen and that's okay because I think every question deserves an answer, or at least the question deserves to be asked. So we'll start with Counselor Alexander.
Um, well, I, I'd already mentioned this in the last meeting and, and the questions I've been getting from, from this, which has nothing to do with going forward, it's they wanna know, when did this happen? When did this start going down and why are we just calling it an emergency now? Well, uh, how long have you been here, Chief Huffman?
Thank you, Counselor. Um, as I stated in the past, this was originally identified in the management survey of two thousand and ten that there were, uh, issues on the horizon. Um, I'd be, I started in two thousand and nineteen and the strategic plan and the citizen community survey was already completed with marching orders on, uh, what, what the community wanted. Uh, so we've been attempting to meet those standards ever since. I, I, I accepted this position well knowing that it would be a challenge and and when I was ready for that challenge, the, the pandemic actually really took us for a loop and impacted a lot of the things we were doing on top of the situation that was already at hand. So to answer your question, it's been going on for many years. Um, I think one of the telling points and, uh, Director Serian can probably talk about this the best is that this has been happening for decades in the Portland Metro Northwest area and it's affected most every other city and district and action has been taken by them in years past. And I think it's a lot to be said of the capabilities of the Gladstone Fire Department. Prior to my arrival, they, they were able to, uh, meet the response needs of the city, but it is hard to keep that up. And I don't know if Director Serian would like to add to that.
Um, I think you're spot on. Uh, there's, it's, it's nationally been a problem for a number of years. It's, it's why some of the agencies are now part of Clackamas One, uh, Clarkson Beaver Creek. Boring, uh, struggled and the volunteerism has changed. It's a national problem. And the departments have just reached the point where they can't do it on their own. And to partner with your neighbors and partner regionally is just how, how it's been. Um, I happen to do consulting work for fire departments on the side. I'm down in San Mateo, California as we speak. And same issue down here, San Bruno, San Mateo, uh, the Foster City, all of the departments up and down the peninsula down here, same type of issues. The ones that have volunteers are having difficulties. The, they're hiring more career staff and departments are partnering, cities are partnering with each other. So it's been a national trend and it's, it's, uh, been part of who we are as a, as an agency and that's, uh, it's just how it is. So.
Okay, so our biggest, our two biggest problems are cash and recruitment. Is that, is that what our, our two problems are here in Gladstone?
I would also describe it as, um, our functional design for deployment. Uh, our model of using on-call firefighters in a volunteer deployment model is, is one of the key issues. And it's, a- as I've stated in the past, it's not about the, the past actions, it's about the current conditions. And, uh, Chief Dunkle, who, uh, was on our last session from the SDAO, did a follow-up with me after that meeting and said, he reached out to the Volunteer Association of America. And they stated that time, training, and call volume were the three main indicators of volunteer effectiveness in a community. Uh, when the time is, is, uh, is needed greater, uh, when the training demands are high and when the call volume is high, the, the volunteer force effectiveness drops considerably. So I think that's, that's, that, that's an answer for your question.
Okay, and, and, and Clackamas Fire One, Nick, I guess you guys, you have, you have no issues with any of these. You've got plenty of people, plenty of money, and, uh, be no problem to, to give us services, huh?
No, I, I, I don't, I would, I wouldn't say that, uh, that we have, we have plenty of money and, and plenty of, of people. I, I think, uh, we ourselves need more people. I think every fire department across the nation could say that. You look at FDNY, which is the biggest staffed fire department, and they've had to reduce staffing over the years. Um, so, so to say that, uh, that, that Clackamas Fire doesn't have any staffing problems, um, we don't, we meet the standards, we meet the effective response force. Our goals as an organization is four-person staffing to meet seventeen-ten. And, uh, currently we've, we've reduced that, uh, to, uh, down to three-person staffing, which is what Chief Huffman was talking about with, with five of our companies. We still have, uh, three of our companies with four-person staffing. Um, the, the budget question that you were, uh, alluding to, Counselor Alexander, uh, we, we noticed a, about a six percent, uh, seven percent issue with our budget. Um, we identified that in the middle of December. Uh, uh, we, we made, took quick action uh, to fix that and we've, we've swung the pendulum back into, uh, living within our means and, and projected outcomes. As if you just look at that article, y- you can see the graphs of where we were trending versus where we're trending now. So, uh, we identified the problem, we acted quickly, uh, we notified our strategic partners that we were doing this. And now we're on the, the recovery, taking a step back to launch two steps forward as far as our staffing.
Okay, so and you, and you guys were talking about, I mean, i- is there any talk about the contracts yet or is, I mean, have you guys talked about, I mean, there's things, you know, that, that I'd like, I'd like to see in, in them, but I don't know, we haven't seen one yet. But like, are, are two captains, would they come over to your, uh, yeah, to Clackamas Fire One and, and, and I mean, minimum, the lieutenants? I mean, minimum, I mean, could you put them in as in an officer position?
Let me, let me get back to real quickly and then I'll answer that question. As far as being able to staff uh, Gladstone Fire Station, we would be, we have enough staffing to staff Gladstone Fire Station. Um, we, that, that is not an issue with us. As you look at how many firefighters we have, that would, that would increase our effective response force from fifty-six currently to fifty-nine. Um, and we have enough, uh, uh, full-time employees to, to do, to do that. As far as where, uh, the employees would come over, uh, that, that's all based on, on training records. That's based on, on union contract. Um, what I could tell you is they would come over to the fire department as, as, as as fire firefighters, you know, um, as far as the rank that they would come over, that, that's yet to be determined.
Okay, and you'd have the funding, and, and this is what we're talking about, and it's contracting everything, is it just for two more years? Because in here you say, if we don't get a levy passed, then, then we lose one of the firefighters.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you are not able to, to, um, to f- fund the levy, um, I, I would, we would, we would take measures as to not, uh, let the city go without services. Um, we would still be responding with a fire engine, but to, to say that we would staff it with a three-person engine company i- isn't a reality. We would, we would likely move that down to a two-person rescue or something of that nature so that, so that there was still response and then you would have a fire engine responding from uh, a neighboring fire station to the residents of Gladstone. But to expect, um, the fire district to staff that with a three-person engine when i- in all due respect here, can't do it right now in the current funds that you have. Uh, I don't think that's a realistic expectation from the council.
Okay, and the only other thing I was that, like, uh, like, if, if you're gonna talk or have a contract get going on, on the fire truck in the building, I asked that last time, you put something in there like lease them for, you know, so much a year, you know, whatever. Then when i- if the contract is over, done, it still remains ours.
Okay, okay, I'm s- I'm sorry, Counselor Alexander, I, I misunderstood what your question was.
Well, if something, if something doesn't work, say, say we get in a contract.
Yes.
And you, it says in here, you'd like our trucks, you'd like the fire, uh, engine, we're expected, uh, exclusive use of all that, that is, I understand all that. But I mean, that would, you wouldn't absorb that and it wouldn't become Clackamas Fire District Ones, right? It would still be Gladstone's and it would just be, you would just be using it while you're contracting your services to us. Is that correct?
What, what a, again, we don't have a, a lockdown contract. What we have is concepts, okay? There's no contract. What we have is, is concept, concepts. And what I has stated in that question, uh, from, uh, the fire chief and the city administrator was that Clackamas Fire, uh, based on equity because of, of what two forty per thousand is for our taxpayers is that we would want to take on your frontline fire engine as part of Clackamas Fire's assets, okay? And then should something happen, you would be able to purchase that engine back at the end of the contract at a, at a, uh, a rate. Um, so it wouldn't be the value of what we got it for. It would be the, uh, what's helped me here, Rick, with what I'm, I'm having a tough time thinking, the depreciated rate, I apologize. Depreciated rate. The other vehicles would be able to be utilized, um, for backup rigs should the frontline engine go down, uh, for staff vehicles as far as, uh, employees, that, that's what we would utilize. And then should, after five years or two years or whatever, the council decided, those vehicles would, would go back to, to Gladstone should the contract be, uh, the city decide to not renew the contract.
All right, thanks, Nick. Jim, that's, those are some of the concerns I was, I was feeling. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Alexander. I appreciate the questions.
Counselor Alexander, if I could add as well, if the city council directed staff to prepare uh, intergovernmental agreement, we would bring that back for the city council to approve. So you will get to see the detail, not just the concepts. And I think that the city attorney, Chad, can also weigh in to talk a little bit about some of these concerns we have with the equipment on how we can add language into a draft contract to, uh, provide the assurances that the city council would want with that.
That Council Alexander, uh, City Administrator Betts, um, is exactly correct. There's, uh, lots of precedent throughout the state for this occurring, as you've already heard about tonight. Um, and there's lots of examples of situations where, uh, things didn't work out and a city went back to either providing the services itself or, you know, contracted with another entity of something to that effect. And so we can provide the council with options and, and working with the district and negotiating contract to make sure that if, for whatever reason, things didn't work out, the city would be able to stand up its own fire department again.
Perfect. That, that answered me. Thanks.
Uh, Administrator Betts, can I just add one piece? Clackamas Fire has zero interest in, in leaving the city of Gladstone high and dry. There's, there's no way in heck, our number one focus is the customers that we've sworn out to protect. That's why we're all here. So rest assured that should something happen to where the city decided not to contract with, with Clackamas Fire, those vehicles would be, would be back so that you could utilize them to operate your, your own fire department. We have zero issue, is, we have zero desire to leave the city of Gladstone high and dry.
Oh, I didn't think you did. I just, these are just questions that, that people are concerned. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, next on my list is Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. Um, I think I, I just more have comments, um, you know, when you put the comparison next to, um, what we have now and what we can receive, you know, the answer seems very obvious, right? Like, do you see those numbers and that differences between the two? Um, and, and you know, what I took from the last meeting, you know, was, you know, Clackamas Fire Department is already in our community serving our citizens, serving our individuals. And you all seem to care very much about what you do. And so I don't, to me, um, you know, again, like I said, I don't have much of a personal, um, connection with this, but it feels like you're already here, you're already serving our, our citizens. Um, and it feels like we have to do this. Um, you know, and I also take away just the comment that Counselor Alexander was, uh, just mentioned that, that this isn't forever, you know, like if we wanted to as a city come back to this discussion and we figure out how to have additional revenue streams and we can fund the fire department, um, wonderful. And so those are, those are really the only comments that I had and, and just for me personally, I just really wanna make sure that the individuals that are working there now have that opportunity to continue to thrive and have a job and have a place to go because they've serviced our community for years and decades and just making sure that they are well taken care of through this transition is my, my biggest concern. But the individuals that I have spoken to about this, they really just, um, they don't care who shows up, they just want someone to show up on a timely manner, um, and, and, and do that job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hartman. Uh, Counselor Ripley.
I'll be very brief because I'm not gonna repeat myself. I've been repeating myself for four years now and it's kind of bouncing off a wall, so I'm not gonna do that anymore. But I do want to make a couple of clarifications. Um, three people on a fire engine is not normal in Gladstone. Gladstone used to get four to six on the first engine now. And then you have another engine and a truck following up. And there was a reference made to a two thousand and ten report. That report was also written by paid chiefs. Y- you can't compare apples to oranges. You don't go to your dentist for new glasses. You don't, you can't run a volunteer group with paid chief. That's where the decline started was, was the first paid chief. Uh, the problem, the problem isn't the volunteers not going to get volunteers, but you have to write a structure that somebody'd wanna volunteer in. Um, that's all I'm gonna say about that. The other comment, I will relay some comments that I've heard from a lot of phone calls and a lot of people from walking around, they wanna know when we have emergency services fail in a city, why somebody hasn't been terminated. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counselor Ripley. Uh, Counselor Todd.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to ask some questions that were sort of answered throughout this whole thing and also our last meeting, but it's more for clarity of anybody who's listening. Um, the paid-on call, uh, firefighters, they, what was their rate that they, that, what do they get paid to go out on a call? Does anyone know?
Yeah, we recently, uh, about two years ago, we tried to change the pay, uh, to meet, um, to raise their pay at some point. We based it on minimum wage and then broke it into quarterly, uh, apportions. And that's, um, that, that was way better than they were getting before.
Okay, so that was it. But they have to meet the same standards and certifications as career firefighters, correct?
A firefighter is a firefighter.
Right, okay, whether paid on call or whatever, so the same certification. Um, you know, nobody's more nostalgic about this town than me, quite honestly. I mean, you all know it, I'm, I can go on for stories for day. Um, Director Serian, I'm the oracle of Gladstone. So we, you know, I know you're the oracle of, of the fire department. Um, and so I have a lot of thoughts on this and, and nobody's thought that this is where we're at, in my opinion. Um, but there are employee shortages in a huge variety of industries right now, everywhere. The, the school district's looking for substitute teachers and, and, you know, you don't have to have a teaching degree or anything more than, you know, a high school diploma, as long as you, you Or anything more than, you know, a high school diploma, as long as you, you know, got a will to do it. Truck drivers, um, my own, our own industry, we just, we can't find employees for my family business either. I'm not shocked that that that's what's happening right now, I think it's sort of a perfect storm of. A lack of volunteerism, um, more opportunities someplace else, because I did see that Clackamas Fire District one is also hiring. Right now, as well as the sheriff's departments and and all of that, so you know, I understand that when there's people. That maybe have a choice between, do, what do I want to do, I'm gonna invest, what what did you say, was it ten to twelve months to qualify? If you, you know, get through that first process, I mean, even if we had six million dollars right here. Would we, would we have the people to do it, would we have the time to implement those people to do it? And, um. You know, I'm sad that we're here, but we're here, so that's what we are fraught with having to deal with. I did want to find out, though, so mutual aid and cost neutral stuff. Has that been going on for a while, that that we're going to Clackamas like seventy-five times and you guys are coming to two hundred and seventy-five nights? Has that been going on for a while? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And so the standard above and beyond what you're placing that cost difference, if we had to pay for it, would be fourteen hundred dollars per call, is that the? The standard number you said?
Yes, Counselor Todd.
Okay. Well, you're already here in the community, and when my dad had his two little, three little things about a year ago, Clackamas Fire was here. Two of the times and Gladstone was one here once, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, you know, I'm not happy to be here, and then anybody who's watching this knows that I'm not happy to be here, but we are where we're at. And our job is to protect all those citizens and all of our community members and. That's all I have to say, so, thank you for all the information and thank you for putting up with us. Asking some of the same questions over and over again, because I know I do it, so, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, so Chief Brown or Director Searing. I'm reading the article that allowed, allowed, state law allowed you to over expand, extend on this budget, SNAPU, because you have. Certain amount of money in the bank, what what is that, I hear it's north of a certain number.
Yeah, currently, we have eighteen million dollars in our, uh, that was for our ending fund balance.
Okay, so is that ending fund balance reserve allocated or appropriated as reserve, or is it just ending fund balance as you're, as you're managing the funds?
Yeah, it's it's ending fund balances, we're managing the funds, that's meant to get us until the tax rolls in November. That way, we don't have to go out for tax anticipation loans or anything of that nature, it's a, it's a. A funding stream for us to be fiscally responsible.
So may I ask, what what do you typically try to do on the percentage there, um, what do you try to maintain for that bridge?
Board policy is is twenty-five percent. So I take that back, I'm sorry, twenty-eight percent, uh, we are down currently to twenty percent. So, uh, that is, that is where we strive to get to. But, uh, like everything in every single department and and Chief Huffman has spoke to it, COVID hammered us. The amount of of leave that we had to do for our employees because of high risk exposures and such, and then the twenty twenty fires. And the ice storms and we've just been, we've, every single fire department's been getting hit hard, and so that's, that's caused us to be where we're.
Right, so, so you bring up a good point, so a, an anomaly like twenty twenty wildfires, I think that's what. Caused you to kind of drift into the budget, the the faster water in the budget stream, right, so that was part of the oversight there, right? Just the calculations going forward.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the other thing I'm gonna add is like, I appreciate both of you and the Chief, Chief Huffman. Presenting this to us along with the city administrator Bets presenting this to us in. In various packages that could be entered into negotiation and or conversation. I haven't been here since twenty ten, so between twenty ten and twenty sixteen, it seems to me like a lot of folks in this town probably knew that there were some. Rocks ahead in the stream and and didn't, didn't pay attention to them, act accordingly, plan accordingly. A lot of the, a lot of this feels like it's been like yesterday, all of a sudden we found out, but I will say this on the record. I know that City Administrator Bets has been talking about this issue for almost two, two years, maybe two and a half years, bringing it to us as a critical component. Concern, and we have done what we could to act accordingly. To try to figure out how to look at it towards a general fund, and this prior to COVID. So I think it's pretty disingenuous for for some of the folks on this call and on this council to be. Pointing fingers at you all, pointing fingers to other folks in our staff, because this has been a topic of conversation for quite a while. I think you're all fiscally sound, it looks like to me, I I went through a couple of the articles and looked at some of the background, I think you, you seem solid. And I do think that the two to one disparity probably is becoming expensive for you all. Uh, I too, um, really don't have the history here, this is not my hometown. But I will say that my neighbors are telling me that they really just want a red truck. With the IFF badge on the top, side of the truck, they would like to say Gladstone, but but they just really want them there within four to five minutes if it's possible in the downtown core. So, um, I appreciate all of kind of the flak that you've all taken in these conversations. But it seems like you're running a sound, a fiscally sound, uh, agency over there. And we're obviously, unless we're gonna really ask for a lot more money here, we're just not gonna be able to really roll that up, so I appreciate. Uh, you clarifying your your fiscal soundness, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Tracy, um, so I I appreciate you bringing that up because that was. Some clarity that I think needed to happen, um, being that it was on the front page of the Clackamas Review, so thank you everyone for bringing that up. Um, I have a couple of questions and my three questions actually come from people who asked me questions, so I'm just gonna put them out there. And raise your hand if you want to answer. Will Clackamas still be part of Gladstone and will the fire truck be in the parade?
A hundred percent, I'll be, I'll be in the parade as well. That we love, we love immersing ourselves in communities. Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, and and Director Searing can back that, you look at every single community that we. That we serve and we're we're immersed in in the, yes, yes.
It's been noted down, so I'm just letting you know, so.
Let it, write it down, write it down.
Get his phone number, okay, and then, um. Why has the fire department's budget been cut in? But why was the fire department budget cut in the last budget?
Is that for Clackamas or Gladstone, I'm sorry?
Probably Gladstone.
Yeah, and I don't have specifics with that, Counselor Garland, and I do know that our finance consultant is on here and maybe Kathy. Can answer that question for us.
Yes, that's a really very simple explanation, we had reserved money and accrued money. The previous year is to purchase the new fire truck and it was sitting in the re, um, the truck reserve. We purchased the fire truck, so there was no longer a need to have that large balance there and the overall budget reduced. In the twenty-one, twenty-three, um, biennial budget. Operations, personnel services, those costs did not reduce, it was in the capital outlay. That caused that reduction and of course, fire truck was very expensive, so you would see that reduction there.
Thank you so much for that explanation, it was clear and I got it. Chief Huffman, is there a reason for not hiring the crew members that are currently under the captains?
First, Counsel, I'd like to add to to the Finance Director's statement. Something else about using cash to pay for the fire engine, it saved us a considerable amount of money. Uh, but by paying cash, so having that reserve replacement fund was was extremely valuable. Um, with regard to your question about hiring, uh, full-time hiring would still have to have a process of qualifications. And it's a different job description, so it would have to be tested in that way. So that, uh, whether it's Clackamas or Gladstone, if we fund those positions, they would be eligible for for that testing process.
So why hasn't in like the last two years, why have we not just hired people? Give them a full-time job, call them part of the family.
That would be wonderful, and that's part of this discussion is is we have no budget for that, so we would have to. First of all, authorize those positions and then we could test and offer that position to be applied for.
Okay, so, um, I have many of the same feelings that Counselor Todd has. Gladstone just means an awful lot to me and my family and I I'm super sorry that we're here. Um, that being said, I would like to see, um, Gladstone. Look at an agreement with Clackamas Fire, but I'm gonna ask for two things. I'm gonna ask for an agreement, what an agreement would look like through the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Which is the same date as the end of our agreement with Local one-one-five-nine. And then I'd like to see what it would look like to have a ten-year agreement. Um, I think, uh, that's a possibility as well, I I would love to. Just see what those look like and then see what this council, you know, making the next move, that would, I think. Be my request, um, and I do want everyone to know that sent a letter in, I read them, I read them again. I listened to what everyone said and I listened to the phone calls and I listened to the messages on my cell phone. I heard you and I am making the best decision for the most amount of people. That's what I have to say, so with that being said. Would anyone like to make a recommendation, oh wait, do we make a recommendation to staff first or are we listening to more public comments? Does our mayor get to talk? I forgot.
We had no one that signed up to speak on this tonight. I would suggest that you, uh, provide guidance to staff. To draft a contract and bring it back to the city council at their April meeting.
Okay, would somebody like to make? A recommendation to staff?
Well, I'll make a recommendation that we that we, uh, get a contract so we can see what's in it before we go any further. I'd like to know what the, what the, what the, what it states.
Do you have, okay.
If that's the recommendation, that's what I want to see, I mean, that's, I want to see the contract and then we can make a decision.
I think that's what you're saying, so I'd like to make a recommendation to the staff that we move forward and come up with a contract for us to review next month.
Yes, I second that.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get there. Um, doing, so we will need consensus, well, is Haley running our meeting? Did I hear that, Haley, would you take a, a roll call vote, please?
Of course, Counsel Ripley.
No.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes. It sounds like we pass and let's bring Mayor Stimple back.
Hello, everybody. All right, thank you, great job, Counsel Garland, very good. So I guess we're done with that item, thank you very much. Mr. Brown and Mr. Searing and Mr. Huffman for all being on this call, appreciate it very much. Um, next is business carried forward, do we have any business carried forward?
I have nothing further tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Looks like Counsel Alexander's got his hand up.
I do have some business carried forward that we need to talk about because since the, uh. Article came out in the Clackamas Review, I've been bombarded, and I mean by a lot of people wanting to know about the resignation, how, uh. We could have a counselor stand up and resign on the record and walk out. And then be able to just come back at the next meeting and, uh, I've got comments here from from many people. You know, like the city attorney, the, uh, the city administrator, the mayor should have deemed that seat vacant when he left. He couldn't do this where he works at Metro and then come back, that doesn't work like that. That he not only quit on the council but also on the community and, uh. That they're just, that, you know, there's a charter, we vote on a charter and people vote on it and they want it upheld. And, uh, so the definition of resignation is the act of retiring or giving up a position. He announced his resignation, so. A lot of people had a lot of concerns why he just got to do that and there was no discussion or no one talked about it or did anything, so, uh. You know, we're we're in violation of our city charter and, uh, that our citizens voted on and took an oath to uphold it. So they want every councilor to do their job and do their, you know, uphold their oath. And, uh, perform their duty, so I was asked to relay that and. With that, I'd like to make a motion that Matt Tracy's seat be deemed vacant due to his resignation on December fourteenth.
All right, do I have a second?
I will second that for one reason, if, Matt, if you would have just said you're sorry, everybody makes mistakes. That, that it, it just speaks a lot when you couldn't even say you're sorry, so.
Appreciate that, appreciate that, the reason back on is citizens were panicked after listening to the tirade that went on after my resignation. So there are more citizens than the folks that you talked to, both of you, thank you.
All right, so it's open for discussion, I'm gonna call one by one to make sure everybody has their say, Counselor Todd.
No.
You, nothing?
No, I have nothing to say, we we've been advised by our council. In regards to this, um, in regards to what the charter said, our previous charter said. I I'm not sure why this continues to come up because if any one of you would have had a moment like that and left the room. I would not be bringing this up now, any one of you, so, no, I have nothing to say.
Counselor Hartman.
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I I feel the same way, um, in the sense that. Uh, I think everyone is aware of the drama that the council has faced in previous councils that. If any, I mean, I'm surprised, a lot of you haven't gotten up in the middle of a meeting and walked out, amount of, you know, um. You know, uh, comments that you all received over the past six years, I mean, this is hard. Matt, Counselor Tracy, is a human, um, and to me, you know, acted in a moment of passion. Um, and anger and frustration, uh, I I don't, I think we've done a great job over the past two months, working together and I feel like. You know, there's not really a discussion to be had, we're moving forward, we we did a great job today, we did a great job last month. Let him finish out his term and then he can be done like he has stated to be done, but I don't feel a need to have this discussion.
Thank you, Counsel Garland.
Well, you all know I'm the. Stickler for the rules, I complained for a long time about. A counselor that didn't live in our city and my. Please went unheard. But I will say on this one that I took our advice from our legal team seriously. Listen to what or read what that was, I do do my homework and I. My gut just tells me that we need to keep moving on the path that we're moving on.
All right, Counsel Tracy.
Mayor, I'm confused, do we have a motion?
We have a motion and we're doing a discussion, yes, we have a motion in a second, so we're doing the discussion before a vote.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna vote one way or another, you all decide.
Okay, Counsel Ripley.
I think I already spoke, I have nothing else to say.
Okay, Counsel Alexander.
Well, Matt's right, there's a lot, there's a lot of people in this town that have a lot of different views and opinions. And I was elected to represent all of them, and when a number of them come to me, like a number of them came to you, you said. And were concerned, well, they they asked us to uphold the charter, why do we even vote on one? And, uh, some of the advice we got from our city attorney, I've got them right here, I could read them all. They went from, well, it wasn't definite, well, it needs to be in writing, well, the charter said none of that, the charter gives the word resignation. And, uh, you know, words have consequences and when you get up and 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 do that. And walk out, that's that, and then it's, someone should have deemed it, deemed the seat vacant right then. And they didn't, and it just seems like, you know. Do whatever you want, and there's a lot of people concerned that there's no, we know the rules don't get followed. A lot of people, a lot of the community members already, I hear that all the time, council rules mean nothing, but the charter, they thought did mean something. So they asked me to uphold it, they wanted their concerns expressed, and that's what I did, and that's why I made the motion.
I think, yeah, uh, for the record, now that we're having this conversation, can Attorney Jacobs please share with the community? Share with the community what his advice was or his recommendations?
The council will have to vote to waive the privilege before I can, I can't make that determination on my own.
Oh, whoops.
I make a motion to waive the privilege. Would somebody second that?
We already have a motion on the floor. So do we pause that motion and do another one? Is that alright, Chad?
You can, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna pause the motion. It's already on the floor and Counselor Todd wants to make a new motion. The inner emotion.
Yeah, I, I made a motion to.
Okay.
With the privilege.
Motion was made by Counselor Todd and seconded by Counselor Garlington to waive the client attorney privilege for this discussion. Any questions, concerns? Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman. Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. Alright, Chad.
So Mayor, Council, um. I was just trying to do a quick search of my emails, see if I could pull up the email itself, uh, which I did not find. But so I'm gonna do my best from recollection. As, as I recall, what we looked at was the exact statements that Counselor Tracy made that evening. And if you recall and going back and looking at the video, um, he expressed an intent that he would be submitting his formal resignation in writing the next day, which never occurred. Um, I advised you all that it is um generally in situations like this. That there is a constitutional right to seek and hold office. And to the extent that there is ambiguity, courts generally defer to the right to someone to hold office. So to the extent that um there is a question about whether or not this resignation actually occurred. Or was just a statement of an intent to resign. Um, a court would likely determine that it was just an, a statement of an intent to resign and not a national formal resignation. Um, based on that, i- if the council wanted to declare the seat vacant. Um, there's a substantial risk that if the, if the city was sued over that, that the city would lose. Um, uh, certainly as, as I stated to you all. That the um, the council is the ultimate decision under the charter of the qualifications of its members. And if you vote to uh, uh, say that the seat is vacant because, and that was an actual resignation. That we would do our best to defend that decision. Um, but at the end of the day, um, if push comes to shove and it goes to court. Uh, it's my thought that we would likely lose that, that litigation. Um, I think that is the general nutshell of the advice. Um, I can certainly, you know, spend some time and, and try to find the exact. Emails that I um sent to you all. Um, but as my recollection, that is the, the crux of the overall advice.
I have them right here. I have them all printed out and uh, because, because a citizen gave them to me because they were concerned, not yours, I mean mine, but. The other, other concerns from the thing. And they said right here, one of yours was. As stated below, verbal resignations are acceptable. And he didn't, he didn't intend to, they said. They said, he said, I offer my resignation. I offer my resignation.
With all due respect, I never said that a verbal resignation under the old charter was not valid. Um, so please don't put words in my mouth and.
I'm not, I'm not, Chad, here it is. Look, I got it, I got it, I got it. I'm not putting any words. It's right here.
So in that, in that email, you're saying that I said that a verbal resignation was not valid?
No, I say right here, you said a verbal, as stated below, verbal resignations are acceptable.
Yeah, they are.
That's what you're saying, I know. That's what he did, made a resignation. That's what I'm telling you. And they said that somebody, I mean, I have access to a lot of people, a lot of attorneys. A lot of them said that right there that day. When he, after he walked out the door, your city attorney, your city administrator, or the mayor should have deemed that seat vacant.
Well, first of all, that demonstrates that the folks you're talking to don't really know municipal law. Because neither the city attorney nor the city administrator nor the mayor have that authority under the charter to do that. The charter vests the authority in the council as a body. And so if, in fact, the council's a body wanting to do that that night, they should have. It's not my role to do that. It's not city administrator's best role to do that, nor is it the mayor's role to do that. Um, it is the council as a body who has the right to do that. And that's what you're seeking to do tonight, which again is fine. My advice to you, with all due respect, is that there is a constitutional right to seek and hold office. To the extent there's an ambiguity about what was intended that evening, a court's going to conclude that the person did not resign. Based on listening to the language that Counselor Tracy used that night. Where he stated an intent to submit a formal resignation in writing the next day, which never occurred. There's, to me, the better argument is that he only expressed an intent to resign that night and never completed the process. You all disagree with that.
Well, now, can I just ask you a question then? Can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
If somebody didn't resign, why would they write a letter to rescind their resignation? Which it says right here, I'm writing this letter to rescind my resignation. So it was clear as plain today as anybody that it was a resignation.
You and I have had several conversations about this over the past several months. You know, you, you've had several telephone calls.
Cause I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm getting asked about it and I have no questions and no answers and I'm not getting any definite ones.
But, but we've had this exact same conversation and we, we've discussed this. And what I've told you is I give you legal advice. It's up to you to decide whether or not you wanna follow that or if you wanna take a different path. And no matter what decision the council makes, you know, we'll respect that and we will do our best to defend it. But it's my job as the city attorney to notify you of your risks and your liabilities. And that's exactly what I did. And frankly, I don't think it is fair nor appropriate. For you to sit there and try to throw either the city administrator, the mayor, nor I under the bus in these kinds of situations. You can, you can take as much responsibility as anyone else. And we've had these discussions again for several months now.
And I do take responsibility because I didn't know what to do. I didn't know what to do at that moment. Cause I didn't know, cause we usually, we usually. Uh, go to staff, staffer, it, we usually. Go, refer to you guys for this stuff and noth- nothing was said, so.
With all respect, I've, I've given you this outline about how to proceed several times.
And that's what I'm doing tonight.
Okay, but don't, but don't, you know, it, it's, it's a little disheartening for you to sit there and try to say. That, you know, we just should have done these things way back when, that we've been ignoring the charter and the rule of the law, which is just not true. You know, I've given you advice about what I think the rule of law is. Again, you don't have to follow that. The council's a body, doesn't have to follow that. But I gave the council as a body the advice and you as a body decided not to do anything.
And, and now after hearing, hearing from the community, I am. My, my biggest question that people, it's probably forty people ask me. How can you not call it a resignation if he writes a letter to rescind that resignation? Do, can you answer to that? It, it wasn't a resignation, but I wanna rescind my resignation. How do you answer that?
As, as my advice stands as it is, I, the, the same, exact same thing. If you look at the language he used that night. My, my interpretation of that language was that he expressed an intent to resign, which he'd never followed through on. Whether or not he used that language to rescind his resignation or whatever else later down the road. Doesn't matter in a court of law. What the court's gonna look at is what he did that night. Now, if Counselor Tracy wants to say he resigned, then, you know, that, that changes everything. But he hasn't said that. He hasn't gone on the record to say that. And, you know, we can't force him to say that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
He said that night, I offer my resignation. So I don't know what more you need. There you go. That's what I'm telling you. I, I'm expressing concerns. Uh, I got neighbors and friends and, and a bunch of residents here too that are, you know. Have concerns. And that's one of them and I represent them too. And I'm, I'm asking about it. And that I, and they watched it plenty of times where I offer my resignation. Those are the exact words. Go back and look. So I, I don't know how there could be an intent to or whatever when they offer the resignation. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm getting asked these questions. I'm not getting any definite answers. And that's what I'm, I'm doing tonight.
I have given you as definite as an answer that I can give you. It is legal advice. This is the same conversation we've had several times over the past several months.
And I've never gotten an answer, but that's okay. I, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go any further.
Don't make up stories, Counselor Alexander.
I'm not making up nothing. You say, you're saying, he re- I offer my resignation. You're saying you're not sure it was a resignation. That's a fact and that's no story. So that's, and that's your, I got your, I got, I got him right here, Chad. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna let it go.
Exactly what I said tonight. The stories I'm saying is that you have had this conversation with me several times over the past several months. And now you're saying, well, I didn't have answers. I didn't know, which is completely untrue. Because we've had this exact same conversation, you and I one on one, several, several times. And you said, okay, thank you very much. I fully understand. I really appreciate that. Those were your words. And now you're pretending that you don't, you didn't know the answers?
I'm not pretending nothing. I'm, I'm representing concerned citizens that wanna know why. He could just offer his resignation, get up and walk out. And then come back whenever he wanted. That's what I'm rep- that's what I'm representing, Chad.
In, in which case, then you should have said exactly what happened tonight. Let's waive the privilege and share with everyone what the advice was. Or you should have made this motion months ago.
I didn't know I could do that. I, I knew, I knew I'm a year, I'm a year here. I didn't.
This is what I'm saying. We had this conversation where you did know you could make this motion months ago.
But I could, no, I make the motion. I didn't know I could waive this. You're, I couldn't, I could waive it and tell everybody what your, your emails were. I didn't know you could do that.
Really? Because the council's done it several times lately.
Well, I didn't. I didn't know that or I would have done it. So regardless, I'm not gonna argue anymore. I made a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Counselor Ripley's got a yellow hand up.
Um, just a little thought, I'll withdraw my second. If we could sit, get the counselors to sit down, just the counselors and have a little round table. Cause, yeah, this has been three years of the biggest disaster I've been involved with. Nobody can get along. We don't, y'all need to have the same opinion, but we gotta stop fighting all the time. And if we could, if we could say, well, just the counselors will sit down for a little round table and. Learn how to work together, I'll withdraw my second.
There's public meeting laws. We can't sort of just sit around and talk. That would be inappropriate. So we need to have a different.
It would have to be, it would have to be a work session or a special meeting, which.
And that's, that's fine, but not doing anything will never get us anywhere. So many other little issues that we.
On the floor already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Counselor Ripley? I didn't hear that.
I care, Wes. We need to learn how to work together. And this is, this is getting so old. But it doesn't matter what it takes. We need to go sit down and figure out what all we can do as a group of counselors. There's a lot of this, not just this, there's all kinds of stuff that's going on in this city, but I'm getting phone calls and I'm sick and tired of getting some of the calls I'm getting. And last week I spent an hour and a half on my phone after last month after state council meeting or after the, the workshop. Talked about the fire department, having people screaming at me. We need, we need to sit down as a group and figure this out. I'm pretty sure we're all adults and we can get along and we can sit down and have a constructive conversation.
Okay, so are you withdrawing your second?
If we could sit down and have a discussion, I will.
So hands up, are, is everybody okay with us getting together? Alright, yeah. Looks like the majority says yes. So are you withdrawing your second?
Yes.
Alright, so we no longer have a second. Counselor Alexander, do you wanna withdraw your motion pending our meeting where we all can sit down and talk?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the mo- motion has been withdrawn. Counselor Garlington, you have another motion to bring up?
I was gonna make a motion that we have a special work session meeting so that we can talk.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion on that?
Uh, stay away from.
Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Alright.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, we will get that on the calendar ASAP. Um, just to forewarn you, we've got a lot of stuff coming up. We're gonna have a busy schedule, but. Having this one is very important, so we'll get that going. Thank you very much. So next is business from the audience. Um, we only have one person that signed up to speak and to, as a reminder that um she gets three minutes. So could you please bring her forward? And Randy, you still have your hand up.
There we go.
Hello, Council. Um, my name is Ginger, Ginger Zimpom and I'm a resident of Gladstone. And um, sorry, after all that, I'm kind of, my brain isn't where it needed to be for this. Um, I was actually wanting to thank um, the city, Counselor Tracy Todd. And uh, the Gladstone Police Department. Um, our Gladstone High School cheerleaders just won two national titles and they were coming back from Anaheim. Um, and Counselor Tracy organized the community to show up um, in front of the high school to give them a big, huge welcome home. And the Gladstone PD was so incredibly awesome that they went and they actually met them coming off of the freeway. Gave them a police escort and made our champion cheerleaders uh, just total rock stars. And they really did a great honor to the community. Um, and so I think uh. Counselor Todd and Gladstone PD um, for, for doing that. I mean, this is what our small town is really great for. Um, having only one high school in the town makes it really easy to come out and support them. I've seen other counselors come to various uh, sporting events. I recently saw Counselor Hartman and Counselor Tracy um, at a basketball game supporting our boys team. Um, I know Counselor Garlington reaches out to students regularly to do volunteer work and it just. This is what Gladstone is about, that small town feel. And um, thank you guys for making our cheerleaders feel. Just incredibly amazing, like rock stars coming home. So that is all I had to say. Thank you guys for your service to the community, all of you.
Thank you. Alright, next is business from the council. So we'll start with Counselor Todd.
Um, I just can't right now, but um, and I, I would just put out a request to my fellow counselors. I know a lot of you have a lot of stuff that you wanna say, but I also think that it's been a very long night, so. If we can trim maybe what we need to do and, and get um, out of here earlier, that would be really appreciated on my end, so.
Alright, Counselor Hartman.
I will go as fast as I can, Counselor Todd. Um, okay, so as most of you know, um, Clackamas County is together a task force that addresses childcare um, last year and they've had several meetings. Um, and what is interesting is that they are taking a uh, exciting and interesting approach to this. This is different than what Monuma County has done with their preschool for all program. And they're actually putting together data and information for childcare for all. So not only during the day, but overnight, um, trade-based childcare. And they have now put together four uh, task force groups. Um, that focus on program and policy, finance, strategy, infrastructure and zoning and workforce. Um, I participate in the workforce uh, task force group that just talks about wages and benefits. Um, but if anyone on here or anyone listening or on the council wants to serve on any of the other ones, they're really just diving into gathering that data. And hopefully we'll be able to present to the commissioners um, end of this year or if not next year, a plan to have childcare for all. Um, which is really exciting. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with Wade Hathorn, which is our um newest member of the Clackamas County College. College Board of Directors and he has Gladstone in his area of representation. And he just wanted me to share that. Gladstone has one of the lowest per capita enrollment numbers among the seven CCC zones. Um, so if anyone wants to connect and lend thoughts as to why we think that is, um. Let me know and I can um, be happy to pass along his information. And then the small school district update, um, GHS is having another vaccine clinic on March sixteenth, four to seven PM at GHS. Um, and then the sort of big emotional moment is uh, M.A.T. will be now optional starting Monday the fourteenth. Um, it is kind of an emotional moment for me because um, you know, it is almost on the exact day when we went on our first lockdown. And so um, we are all very excited that it feels like we're coming out of this COVID fog, even though, you know, we're all gonna stay mindful that it's not completely over. Um, but with this, you know, there, the events are coming back. The carnivals are coming back and all of the fun things that our kids have missed out on past two years are coming back. Um, and lastly, I just really quickly wanted to again shout out congratulations to Gladstone High School Cheerleading. Uh, for the two national titles in the state that they won. Um, I, I wanted to quickly, and I'll read it as fast as possible, just say their names for everyone. Um, Abby H, Ariana, Captain Aubrey, Bella, Sienna, Claire, L, Giselle, Giselle, Captain Grace. Kaylee, Jessica Logan, Maddie, Captain Maddie, Mackenzie, Mackenzie, McKenna, Naomi, Natalie, Riley, Sam, Egan Wyatt. Wyatt, Zoe and Coach Shelby, Coach Larissa, Coach Carrie and Coach Caitlin. And with that, Happy International Women's Day. You guys rock.
Alright, Counselor Garlington.
I was gonna say happy uh, National International Women's Day too, cause it's been a fun day and we have a big thing going on at work tomorrow, but that's a shh, so. Um, really quick, I just wanna say that the Clackamas County Task Force is moving very slowly. But they are moving forward. They're having another meeting. Um, in fact, they're trying to get another meeting in before. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners meets to discuss the Concord Library. The Concord Library Project. The Gladstone Task Force is moving forward, uh, contrary to what we heard from a resident last meeting. Completely wrong. We are getting a library. They are tearing down the old city hall. We are going to see something happen soon. Just stay tuned. Um. The Senior Center Board is meeting on the fifteenth. Uh, we didn't meet last meet month, so I haven't had anything to say about that. And then, uh, the Clackamas County Board Library Board spent most of the last meeting talking about the Concord Project. We have another meeting on the seventeenth, so hopefully we still need to get rid, uh, through some. The, some rules and things like that that we've been working on for a couple of months and. I'm really excited too about the Gladstone High School girls because I love it when I get caught in one of those parades when the kids come home. So. Okay, and that's all. Have a good night.
All right, Counsel Tracy.
I don't have anything to add to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ripley?
I think we'll go with Counsel Tracy and Counsel Todd. See you guys later.
Counsel Alexander?
Got nothing. Thanks.
All right, I'll do a real quick summary. Um, food pantry's still open from three to five thirty. If you guys want to give donations. Wednesdays from two to three thirty is the best time to do it. We still need donations and volunteers and those that have stepped up. Thank you so much. Parks and Rec Board met. They talked about the Meldrum Bar site plan. They should have final renditions, um, for the next board meeting. Darren talked about parks maintenance. Um, they're going to do a Robin Hood neighborhood survey to find out what they want in their park. They're doing a park furnishing standard survey. Um, they talked about the sports users fees, uh, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, C four. Um, I'm not going to go into deep detail, but there's a lot going on. If anybody's interested, just let me know. Um, our main top priority topics are going to be climate action plan, DLCD and the impacts of the House bill. The density house bill, I-25 tolling, metro housing bond updates, emergency management, affordable housing. And transit options. We're looking at coordinating efforts so that especially in the shelter and homelessness issues. Our realm so that no need is falling through the cracks. Um, the legislative update is that the, um. The Ways and Means Committee chose to fund the, um. County courthouse as the only project to fund. Out of the millions and millions of dollars, but it's not a bad thing because we had submitted three projects for funding. Now, I talked to Senator Kenimer this morning and they have instead moved our projects to. The, um, Oregon depart, Oregon Transportation Commission for funding because they're all transportation related. So fingers are still crossed. We're still going to be advocating hard for that one. Planning Commission, they reviewed and approved the new Gladstone Library.
Yay!
One step closer. That's so exciting. Um, Gems, they meet, I believe, once a month. They looked at their one-year plan, social media efforts. Volunteer forum needs to be worked on and they, we went over emergency preparedness kits, which I think they'll be publishing. Water and Environmental Services, uh, they are. They've discovered that they're going to need to, um, increase their capacity. So they're looking at a twenty forty plan and they're actually looking out to twenty eighty as well. So there may be some, um, some asks coming soon to fund their, um, their next big projects. Um, and also the next meetings that we have coming up, if I can find my piece of paper. My goodness, I'm sorry. I have papers all over the place. Anyway, we have two meetings coming up. Um, Jack, you do want to help me with that? I know I had it here.
We have one next Tuesday, the fifteenth, at five thirty PM with Planning Commission. And then the following week, you have a work session. And I will try to see if I can maybe get a facilitator to help have some conversations on March twenty second.
Okay, again, sorry, I don't know where that page disappeared to. Anyway, so that's all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Some of.
And do I have a second?
I can second.
Motion was made by Counsel Hartman and seconded in tandem by Counselors Todd and Garland. Um, any discussion? Haley, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Ripley?
Yes.
Counsel Alexander?
Yes.
Counsel Tracy?
Hi.
Counsel Hartman?
Hi.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Garland?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, um, meeting was adjourned at eight fifty-seven PM. Thank you very much. Very long meeting.